Are we recording?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Welcome everyone to the August 10th Select Board meeting for the Town of Barrington. As Chairperson of the Barrington Select Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. The meeting again has been authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we, as a Select Board, are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're utilizing Microsoft Teams for the electronic meeting. All members of the Select Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in the meeting. Phone participation will take place at 1603-664-0240. Entering confirmation, sorry, conference ID 994-577-57, pound or hashtag will get you into the meeting on the phone. Video participation is by bit.ly/barrsb200810. Public notice is necessary when providing access to this virtual meeting. We previously gave a notice to the public of necessary information for addressing this meeting, including how to access the meeting using Microsoft Teams via phone or video. Instructions are also provided.
Tracy, you unmute?
I can't hear.
I can't hear you either. Let me try muting you.
It's not me. Did any of them?
She's muted again.
You just muted again. Try talking? No. Here, I'm gonna mute you. Unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
I wanted to mute.
I tried clicking it once and then, oh. You just went green.
Can you hear us?
Maybe she'll log back in.
Huh.
Green screen. Hey, Mr. Bailey, you're looking awful festive. Is that the old Buffett t-shirt or what?
No, that's my Robbitt shirt.
Five o'clock somewhere, right?
He's back.
Tracy, can we hear you? No.
Nope. She may have to call in.
Or she's gonna throw in the towel. We gotta be careful.
No, she doesn't give up. Well, if you look under the option, you know, you could still mute the participant. Okay, and it just went there now, but...
She's leaving.
She's gonna try to come back in. So George, do you have your TA report in front of you?
Yeah.
Okay, can you continue reading as Acting Chair in Tracy's absence for adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access about three quarters down?
Providing necessary information.
Okay.
Oh.
Oh. Sorry, y'all. Are we, are we ready to roll and did any of what I said earlier get recorded?
Yes. And if you just wanna take a roll call vote and then we can entertain a motion to go into non-public for reputation.
That'd be fabulous. Roll call vote beginning with Select Person Air. Could you state your address and who's home with you?
Daniel Air, I'm at 334 Old Conker Turnpike. There's no one here. Didn't put my vote or anything. I'm in the locker room, so I think I'm safe.
I hope you're safe.
I hope so too. George Bailey, 19 Chesley Drive. I'm in my office upstairs. My wife's in the house downstairs watching the news. I will not have anybody here to influence my vote.
Jim Sikosha, 21 James Henry Drive. I got my dog with me. Other than that, nobody's with me and nobody be influencing my vote.
Very good. Tracy Hardikoff at 48 Stone Farm Drive. I have my Bernice Mountain Dog, Puppy and Husband home in another room. No one will be influencing my vote. I will entertain a motion at this time to enter a non-public session for purpose of reputation. I have Select Person Air raising that motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Select Person. Thank you, Select Person Bailey. Roll call vote beginning with Select Person Air.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Sikosha, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. I will meet you all in non-public. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
George is here.
Jim, are you going on video?
I'm not.
Okay. I don't know how anybody's gonna see. Raise your hand, so use your little raise your hand thing when you do wanna speak so that George knows.
Okay.
Connor, tell me on that.
And Dan, are you going to be in video?
Yeah, can you see me?
No.
Yeah.
I see, I see myself.
Well, I usually pin you and I'm pinning you and, oh, there you are. Okay, I kept pinning you now. Great. I can see you on my screen now. Let me pin. Yep, go ahead.
I like to pull a board to ask George to act as chair tonight due to Andy is out of on vacation with his family and he does not have internet service.
And Tracy is in no condition given her surgery to lead this meeting. I would agree with that. Starting with Select Person Air.
Aye.
Bailey?
Aye.
Sikosha?
Sikosha, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. Thank you for being willing to do this, George. It's all on you and I'm gonna hang in there for as long as I can.
My best to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the August 10th Select Board. I would ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
George, if you would, just read that first page before we do the pledge. Read that first page of the TA report. I know we did it before we started the non-public, but just for the folks that have joined us, if you'd read through that.
As Acting Chair of the Barrington Select Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to the Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe or listen contemporarily to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Microsoft Teams for this electronic meeting. All members of the Select Board have the ability to communicate contemporarily during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporarily, there we go, I get it, listen, and if necessary, participate in the meeting. Phone participation, dial 1603-664-0240 and enter confirmation code ID 994-577-57, pound or hashtags, whichever is there. And then once you get in, you click for video Providing public notice with the necessary information for assessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Microsoft Teams, phone or video. Instructions have been provided on the website of the Town of Barrington at www.barrington.nh.gov. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during meetings if there's a problem with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-664-0146 or email at administration@barrington.nh.gov. Adjourn the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during the meeting shall be done by a roll call vote. Start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anybody in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the public right to know. I'll start it off. Bailey, 19 Chesley Drive. There's nobody in this room with me and there's nobody here to influence my vote. And there's nobody here to influence my vote.
Select Person Aya? I'm at 3:34 Old Conker Turnpike, I'm in a locker room by myself, there's no one who knows my vote.
Select Person Sakosha, 21 James Henry Drive, and I'm here with my dogs, other than that, nobody's here to influence my vote.
Select Person Hardikoff, for now, at 48 Stone Farm Road, Barrington, New Hampshire. I'm home with my husband and my dog, and no one will be influencing my votes.
Thank you very much. Now, if you'll join, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd appreciate that.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much. What I would like to do is that we came out of, uh, non-public session, and we do not have any, uh, what's the correct term there, TA?
Announcements?
We have some tax deed lists that we're going to go through. Tax deeds are, will be listed by the property. Does anybody have any objections on how we do this?
So we'll, um, so the Select Board discussed reputation for properties eligible for tax deed in support of their decision of issuing deed waivers. Um, that will be handled under the 2020 tax deeding under Old Business. Um, so the Board can, uh, can take that in, in normal order as an agenda item.
Thank you very much, that really helps, okay. Moving on, uh, we have our remote, the, uh, you have to bear with me here just for a minute. Okay, the next item on the, uh, agenda is a public hearing, is anybody, I mean, public, uh, we have a public hearing, we don't have any. Next, uh, next one on that is the appointments. Under appointments, we have a joint meeting with the Recreation Commission. Uh, are they present for this meeting, please?
Jim Noble, present.
Thank you, Jim, how are you tonight, Jim?
Great, George, how are you?
Good, thank you.
So, at the last Select Board meeting, there's a joint meeting with the Recreation Commission to discuss various topics related to their construction activities, the firewall, uh, the corrective action plan for the code issue, et cetera. One of the topics that the Select Board had prepared for, um, which was postponed, uh, was a discussion of the Memorandum of Understanding. The Select Board had prepared a, uh, draft update to the Memorandum of Understanding, and, uh, the Recreation Commission, uh, in response, prepared a, um, draft for the Select Board to consider. So, the, the draft that the Recreation Commission sent over, which is attached to my report, uh, has been updated since then, um, so I sent out to the Board the updated, um, draft from the Recreation Commission, uh, the draft proposal, um, highlighting the changes uh, between what was originally sent in that one. Uh, Mr. Bailey, uh, Tracy has her hand up, and also, I'd just like it stated for the record that, uh, Andy was excused for tonight's meeting, um, he let the Chair know ahead of time. So I think Tracy has her hand up.
All right, uh, Select, Select Person Hardikoff, please, you have, you have comments?
Yeah, thank you, Chairperson Bailey, so I've reviewed both the, um, last year's Memo of Understanding, um, had, you know, reviewed some extensive information, um, regarding our personnel policies for the town, and have reviewed this most recent draft that came over Friday, and I think what I would propose, as opposed to, um, coming forward and, and, you know, having a, a large number of people hash out line item for line item, I always believe that it's best to produce for the town residents a, a well-thought-out document, and I'm wondering if the Board would consider doing like a subcommittee group on communication with the, um, Chair of the Commission for the Rec Department, the, um, Rec Director, the Vice Chair of the Commission, the Town Administrator, myself, and our liaison, Jim Sakosha, to the Rec Commission, and then bring back a final document to approve, as opposed to a working session, um, that could take quite a bit of time in this meeting. How do, how does the Select Board feel about that?
I, I think that that is a, uh, wonderful suggestion, and I for one would be, uh, one that would sponsor that. Uh, how say the rest of the, uh, Board, please? Uh, Mr. Air?
No, I'm, I'm open to discussion, but I need to ask a couple of questions, and two.
Please.
So, I went through the, read everything, the more information came out today and stuff. The information that came out today, was that approved by the Conservation Commission in their minutes?
The Rec Commission?
Rec Commission, Mr. Air.
The Recreation Commission, was that approved in their minutes? That, the changes today, that I got?
This is Jim Noble responding, it was approved in tonight's meeting.
All right, let, let me, uh, remind everybody on the Board, uh, we have set before us a way to, uh, expedite this matter and to get it taken care of. It's been recommended that we have several members from the Board of Selectmen and several members from the Rec Commission to sit down and be able to hash this out where they have a little bit more time, and it wouldn't take up all the public's time tonight. Does anybody?
George, I would like to, I would like to put that into a motion.
Please.
Sakosha, I motion to get a, uh, group together, um, both of the Rec Department and Select Board members to do a working draft of the, uh, Rec, uh, Memorandums of, uh, Understanding.
Well, that'd also include the ones from the Board of Selectmen.
Correct.
Thank you, I will second that, is there any other further discussion?
No.
Seeing, seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye, thank you.
And, uh, Mr. Noble, I, I hope that, uh, you can, uh, take this information back, and I think it would be more, it would be very productive when all of us get together and do this. I thank you very much for your time, and I hope you understand, uh, the expedience of the public that, why we're doing this.
I am happy to do that, and I would endorse that, uh, wholeheartedly, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, very much.
Okay, the next, the next, uh, on the appointments, is we have the appointment of Lance Merrill. Is there any reason for us to go into non-public to discuss this?
Huh?
See? Somebody's talking, is, is that, is any of the members talking?
No.
Okay, seeing, uh, seeing none, uh, do I have a, uh, a, a motion to approve, uh, Mr. Merrill for the, his appointment to the Rec Commission?
I just wanted to be clear, is this an alternate, or is he taking a full position?
Full position.
Very good, I, I would make the motion that we, um, appoint Lance Merrill to the Town of Barrington Recreation Commission.
Do I have a second, please? I have a second of Jim, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote, please.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
Hardikoff, aye, thank you.
All right, that would, uh, TA, would you ensure that, uh, Mr. Merrill is notified and we get him sworn in?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That, that concludes the appointments, the next one is a public comment, is there any public comment? Uh, I don't have a, uh, clock, so somebody will monitor.
George, I could start a, I could start a watch right now.
Start it for 30 seconds, please.
So if anybody is participating on their phone, and that they'd like to render a public comment, press star six to unmute yourself, if you're participating on the computer, you can raise your hand, you can enter a comment to let us know you're interested, or if you just start talking, we'll hear you. Not seeing any chats come through, not seeing any hands go up, or anybody go off their mute. But I think once the 30 seconds expire, we'll be good to go.
Okay, Board, we are good.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, moving on, next is the review of the minutes of July 27th. It's, any comments?
Nope, they look good to me.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July 27th of 2020.
Bailey, second it. Roll call vote, please.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
Hardikoff, aye.
Thank you very much, everyone, that counts, next we have the staff report, Administrator MacGyver?
Yes, so everything that I have is covered as an agenda item, but where we are here is the first meeting in August. Uh, I want to make sure that I cover the August work anniversaries, um, which I will say, August is a popular month for the Town of Barrington to be hiring, folks, we've got a long list, I'll move through it quickly. Starting at the top, based on years of service, Jerry Kaliff in the Highway Department, 33 years this month. Uh, terrific, long-tenured employee. Uh, right next to him, Dick Conway, former police chief, current recreation site supervisor, at 33 years as well. Bob Sabian in the Fire Department, at least 21 years. Um, this information comes from our finance system as a hire date, so some folks have worked with the town longer than what is indicated in that system. This is typically based on the first paycheck they received. Um, we have quite a gap in longevity from 21 years down, uh, to our next employee celebrating an August anniversary. Michelle Cludier was hired in the Police Department four years ago. Uh, Craig Deedy, Jessica Boswell, Keith Brody, Michael Bayer, and Robert Lyons were, were all hired in the Fire Department four years ago, and are still active in the department. Amanda Noyes, our Building and Assessing Administrative Assistant, was hired three years ago. Shane Elliott was hired as a Highway Department crew member three years ago. Jamison Young was hired as a police officer in the, uh, Police Department two years ago. I was hired two years ago this month, actually, two years ago today, my first day in the town.
Congratulations!
Glad to be here. Uh, Mark Moore, your road agent, was hired one year ago this month. Autumn Smith was hired in the library one year ago, and Kaylee Downs was hired in the Fire Department one year ago. Uh, so we look forward to, uh, having that group from D to P end up on the list here in 20 or 30 years in the A to B category of multiple decades. Uh, so that's all I have, uh, Mr. Bailey, and everything else is agenda item, thank you.
Well, I tell you, thank you, uh, Mr. MacGyver, I'm gonna say that all this shows you that the town is moving forward, we've, we've, uh, found replacements for those that have retired, and now it shows that we have growth coming right behind us, and it's a positive, uh, bit of information. I want to thank each and every one of them, and congratulate them for the time they've spent with the town. Uh, Municipal Officer Administrator, Clodel, Clodel, excuse me.
You got it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, um, for your review and signature, I have a repurchase deed with no covenants, two AP manifests, one for week, or period ending, uh, 729, and another for 85, and two payroll manifests for week ending 82 and 89, that's it.
Any comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Ms. Clodel, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Moving on to Old Business. On Old Business, the first item is the 2020 tax deeding. Mr. MacGyver, would you like to take care of that?
Yes, so, um, every year pursuant to RSA 8077, the, the, the Select Board, the tax collector must issue the Select Board deeds for properties that are eligible. Um, eligibility is based on three years of, of outstanding taxes, um, on a lien from three years ago, and so the, the Select Board has been provided a list and updated throughout the process. There's an updated list attached to my report tonight. The, every year, there's a certain number of properties that the, the tax collector in the town recommend the Select Board issue a deed waiver for, and so this deed waiver, uh, process is authorized under RSA 80 colon 76, um, subparagraph 2A. And what, uh, what this allows is the town to avoid taking on unnecessary liability for properties. And so, uh, I won't go through the, the specific reason for each property, but these are properties that are in bankruptcy, that have contaminated property, um, you know, for a couple of them, even a superfund site. And so, there are various reasons why the town, uh, it isn't, um, in the best interest of the town to accept ownership of these properties and the liability or undesirable characteristics which come along with them. So, it, attached to my report, you'll see a list, and there's properties listed in blue. The Select Board is gonna go through and take action on each one of those properties, issuing a deed waiver, uh, which they'll sign electronically after the meeting. So, what I've done is, in the, in the chat, and I think it'd be most efficient, maybe, if we had one person making the motions, um, and so Jim, if, if you have your chat up and the paper in front of you, if you want to make the motions, and each time, I, I put text in the, in the chat that says, "In its judgment, acceptance of the ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligation or liability risks." And so, re- request, I, I make a motion to authorize a deed waiver for such and such a property for that reason. Um, and so if we can go through that list, I think we can be relatively efficient.
Okay.
Really put me on the spot right there. Um, so we're gonna go.
What page is that language on?
I just put it in the, in the chat, on the, on the Teams meeting.
Okay.
Thank God, I don't get it.
Uh, oh, up in the chat box, everyone click on their chat box, there you have it, okay, thank you.
I don't want to go there.
And, are we gonna start with the, we're gonna do the blue properties, correct?
Yes.
"In its judgment, acceptance, and the ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to under undesirable obligation or liability risk." Of 46 Small Road, owner Gary Roger, property ID 109-dash-0017.
Excuse me, Jim, you all have to do is read the property ID.
Okay.
Yep, so that was a motion to issue a deed waiver for map 109 lot 17, and is there a second?
Second, Bailey.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
Hardikoff, aye.
Okay, moving on, "In its judgment, acceptance, and the ownership of the real estate would, would subject the municipality to understand the obligations or liability risk." Property ID 262-dash-0004.
Bailey, aye. Bailey's making the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
Hardikoff, aye.
Okay, moving on, "In its judgment, acceptance, and the ownership of real estate would subject the municipality to undesirably obligation or liability risk." Property ID 262-dash-0001.
I'll second it. Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Hardikoff?
Oh, Hardikoff, aye.
Aye, hey. "In its judgment, acceptance, and the ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirably, um, obligation or liability risk." Property ID, that would be 102-dash-0089.
I'll second that, and air, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
Hardikoff, aye.
Okay.
Yeah?
Okay, "In its judgment, acceptance, and the ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligation or liability of risk." And that is 259-dash-0003 is the property ID on that one.
I'll second that, air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Hardikoff, aye.
Okay, moving on, "In its judgment, acceptance, and the ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligation or liability risk of property ID 251-dash-0031."
I'll second that, air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Hardikoff, aye.
Sakosha, aye, moving on, "In its judgment, acceptance, and the ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirably obligation or liability risk." And that is going to be 251-dash-0031.
I'll second that, and air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Hardikoff, aye.
Sakosha, aye, moving on, "In its judgment, um, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligation or liability of risk." And that is 023-d- And that is 023-0025.
I'll second that. Air eye.
Bailey, aye.
Hardikoff, aye.
Skosh, aye. Okay, moving on. "In its judgment, acceptance, and the ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable liability risk." And that is 023-0051, property ID.
I'll second that. Air eye.
Bailey, aye.
Hardikoff, aye.
Skosh, aye. Last one. "In its judgment, acceptance, and the ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligation and liability risk.
I'll second that. Air eye.
Bailey, aye.
Hardikoff, aye.
Skosh, aye. TA MacGyver, we are all done with our blue line items.
Fantastic, and so just in summary, the Select Board just took action to issue deed waivers to not take a tax, not accept a tax deed from the tax collector on those properties. The properties in orange are eligible to be tax deeded if the balance listed in the column of 2016 plus or 2017 isn't paid by August 27th. And at that time, the town will take ownership of those properties, start any eviction process and/or the sale process as well.
I want to take this time to thank everybody for moving forward with this tax deed. I know it was a pain, but I appreciate everybody's help on that. Moving on, we have used police crews to purchase review update.
Yes, so I have for you tonight, the Police Chief George Joy is available to present just a summary in your report. In my report, you'll see a copy, which I will get up onto the screen in the proper orientation, which shows a summary of the cruiser, and if George is there and off mute, he can run through it with you.
George is here, can you hear me, Connor?
Yes.
Okay, so I did it correctly then. So yeah, if you go to the linked page, you'll see that everything was quoted, came out essentially there. There was a slight uptick in the cruiser setup. That's the fifth line down. We were quoted at 5196, we came out at 5412. Honestly, that's the difference in mats for the car, because apparently the state of Missouri carpets their cruisers. I guess they don't have sand and salt like we do in New Hampshire. All told, we came in at 29,43712, so about $3,500 under budget. If you figure the 4750 we got for the old Taurus at auction, which is well over what we normally get, the actual expended to the overall budget will be 2468712. So clearly, out of our line item, it's 29,437, but from a town standpoint, we are well under budget at 2468712.
That is very, that's, anybody else have, Dan, you have a comment?
This is a new dark gray cruiser, or this is last, last year's cruiser.
Select person here, this is the one we bought from Missouri. I'll be reporting out on the dark gray cruiser once everything is finalized with that. We still need to strip down the Ghost, and actually, that's two agenda items down as far as disposal. This is the silver cruiser we got from Missouri. We'll get a report out on the new one, well, the gray one shortly.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Only thing I want to say is just highlight the fact that the Police Department was able to dispose of that Taurus for 4,000, and receive $4,750. The person paid over $5,000 for it. So tremendous work on behalf of the Police Department, acquiring that kind of return on a used piece of equipment, benefiting the town.
Here, here. Next item is the Ghost.
George, go ahead.
So, as we just reported out, and TA MacGyver mentioned, after receiving 4750 for the old unit four, the Ghost will be the next one up on the block, which is what the dark gray Charger is set to replace. We've already pulled the radio and the radar unit out of it, which has been placed into the gray Charger. We still need to get the rest of it stripped out, and that will need to be disposed of afterwards. I'm coming to the board just for permission to go back to St. Jean Auction, which is filling in for the White Farm during the COVIDs, and dispose of it in that manner again.
Subperson.
Yes, go ahead.
I believe the White Farm State Surplus, it goes through them, and they sub out St. Jean's to auction for the state. So I, we're going through the state, White Farm, or are we going to St. Jean directly?
It is for the state, but we just go right down to St. Jean's directly. The vehicle gets driven down there and left, and they take care of the rest.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the proper police cruiser disposal of the Ghost.
I'll second that. Bailey seconds it. Any other further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Air eye.
Bailey, aye.
Hardikoff, aye.
Skosh, aye.
Thank you very much, I appreciate everybody. Okay, next we have the Chief Joy, you have the Body Worn Camera Bid Award.
So again, we provided information. You should have the RFPs and the recommendation. Axon, clearly, based on the figures, and based on the criteria met was miles ahead of everybody. It is also the least expensive option, so the Police Department's recommendation at this time is to continue discussion with Axon and go with their bid.
Further discussion? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Air eye.
Further discussion? I have Dan, aye. Bailey, aye.
Hardikoff, aye.
Skosh, aye.
There you go, Chief, you got everything all wrapped up for you really quick.
Thank you, much appreciated.
I hope you come the next time, you're just this fast.
Hold on.
What is it?
I thought Connor tried to say something.
I did, I was just going to wait, I can be patient. Mr. Bailey, I just wanted to make sure it was clear to the community, the decision the Select Board just made to award the Body Worn Camera Bid, this is a process that's been underway for well over a year, and there's the bulk of the work performed out of a committee within the Police Department, headed up by Sergeant Barber with involvement of others, more recently Deputy Chief Brooks. And so this process has been a culmination of a lot of work, including meetings with the Technology Committee, conversations with area agencies, a presentation to the community in the Select Board last summer. And so they're approaching the finish line of implementing this. This was a big step in order to decide who we're going to be working with. They're also finalizing the policy development as part of it as well. So I just want to make sure that while the decision was very quick that the Select Board just made, this has been a very thoughtful process, very long process, and much credit to the folks involved in getting it to where we were. And it looks like I saw Chief Joy raise his hand, he might want to render another comment, Mr. Bailey.
Please, Chief Joy.
I did, and TA MacGyver just hit on it, and I'd like to follow up. The process has been ongoing, as everybody knows, and I know in the past, specifically Select Person Hardikoff and Select Person Knapp have been key in talking about policies. And prior to these cameras going into inception, which I would say will happen sometime in early fall, perhaps at the September 14th Board Meeting, I'd like to come forward with portions, not the extent of it, but the portions that are relevant to the public about the body cam policy and the transparency that we'll gain through the camera's use.
Does that include a schedule for training?
That will include the schedule for training.
Thank you. Any further questions on Chief Joy? Mr. MacGyver, turn it back to you.
Thank you, we're ready for the next agenda item, letter E, Fire Tank Truck Update. So this, I'll let, I think I saw Chief Walker here, he can get himself off mute, just want to make sure you're up to date on the purchase authorized by the Select Board. Go ahead, Chief Walker.
We got word that the tanker is supposed to be coming off the line by the middle of this week, should be shipped, it'll, should be in Connecticut around the 28th of August. We're still working out the details to send the old tanker within the next week or 10 days down to Connecticut. They get about two weeks worth of work. Assuming that the new chassis makes it over to the vendor, it's about a 90-day turnaround time. The pump is, pump and housing is sitting at the vendor waiting right now, so assuming no delays and it shows up the end of August, we should see the new truck somewhere near the last week of November.
Does anybody have any questions for the Chief? But Chief, we still using our policy that we have with communities, if we do run across a need for a tanker, they would, you'd be able to get one?
Absolutely, we have tankers on our mutually run codes anyway. If we go to an issue, we're just pulling the trigger quicker and adding a tanker from the next community that we wouldn't normally pull one from. So we're getting people on the road quicker.
Thank you very much. Takes care of the truck. Anybody else have any questions left on the tanker?
No, sir.
Moving on to the Fire Tank Truck Radios.
So, if I may, we're, as we've talked about, moving forward and getting new radios into the fleet over the next few years, and the Select Board has expressed an interest in doing that in pieces, so we're not necessarily replacing 30 or 40 radios all at one time. I'm looking to put, obviously put new radios in that truck, so that we don't have to do it a year or so down the road. And I'd like to take the money out of the Fire Truck Capital Reserve Fund to pay for that.
Anybody have any questions? Do I have a motion? Oh, Dan, you have questions, sorry.
I don't, I don't, isn't there communication lines?
Yeah, there is, Dan. The thing is, is the way the Fire Truck Capital Reserve article is written, it allows us to purchase a vehicle and equip it. This would allow, where we anticipated spending about $350,000 on the tanker, and because of the way we're going, we're going to be considerably less, so my personal thought process is, is if we take the money out of the Fire Truck Capital Reserve, that leaves the Communication Capital Reserve intact, because obviously, you understand that we have to do a infrastructure upgrade and then stop purchasing radios out of that after.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Second it.
Roll call vote, please. Bailey, aye.
Hardikoff, aye.
I thank everybody very much, Chief, and thank you for your participation.
Mr. Bailey, I just want to make sure it's clear for the record that that motion and vote was authorizing, the Select Board authorizing spending up to $12,750 from the Fire Truck Capital Reserve account for radios in the Fire Tank Truck.
Yeah, so moved.
That was what we already voted on, we're ready to go. Thank you very much.
No, I just, I want to make sure the minutes, so when the trustees of the trust funds are looking at the minutes authorizing these expenditures, that it, just crystal clear for them, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Maybe we can go co-stand on the line, too, but anyway, if you would like to do the COVID grant funds.
Yes. Okay, so this is the only big one I have for you tonight, I say big one, that requires a little bit of conversation. So the, I've been working to keep the board up to date on everything that's changing for what we're doing in the coronavirus world and pandemic, the new laws and funding sources, et cetera. So going back to one very specific funding source, which is derived from the Federal CARES Act, which gave 1.25 billion to the state of New Hampshire. The governor created the Governor's Office for Emergency Relief and Recovery, the Gopher Office, to administer that money. They've carved out different pots of money to make available to basically every sector within the state, including municipalities. They made an original allotment of $32 million for each municipality based on population. Town of Barrington is eligible to receive $213,764. The Select Board voted to accept and expend these funds at the May 11th meeting, so you'll remember, we've already talked about it, this is the municipal relief fund money. So so far, we've already received a reimbursement for $36,538, and we've also already made an additional $15,909 of eligible expenses, which we have yet to submit for reimbursement. And so of the $213,764, we have committed $52,447 already, which leaves a balance of 161,317. So again, how it's worked so far is, we make expenditures that we know qualify, and we submit them for reimbursement, we get the money. And so there's always been a little bit of question about some things, whether or not they qualify for reimbursement, but by and large, we've been making these expenditures outside of the operating budget with the expectation that they'll be reimbursed from this pool of money which was made available to us. So in this ever-changing world of the pandemic, one of the changes that the federal government made, which the state supported, is they made it a little bit easier for municipalities to gain access to those funds, or what was authorized to use it for. Specifically, the updated language says that, "In light of the emergency nature of this program, and as a matter of administrative convenience," which that was music to my ears. They say administrative convenience, and I throw a party, because this, the reimbursement requests have been a nightmare, a ton of work, and I scratch my head to wonder if it's really worth the $213,000, but it is, because that's $213,000 the Town of Barrington didn't have. But anyways, administrative convenience, a government may presume that the entire payroll costs for public health and public safety employees are payments for services substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency. So what that will allow us to do is submit one more reimbursement request for one set of payroll costs, and receive the entire balance, the 161,000, from the money that was allotted to us. So that's what I intend to do. But that creates some financial and accounting challenges, which is why I'm before the board right now. So again, previously, that $213,000, we were spending, knowing that it would be reimbursed, improving a lot of our services. We've had telework improvements, we've had network improvements, where we've bought PPE and cleaning supplies, and a lot of things in order to help us do our job better in the coronavirus environment. And so now, we're basically able to unlock that money for, under one justification, the payroll cost for public safety, and that will create a $161,000 hole in our operating budget of surplus. So essentially, that, you know, we had budgeted for that 161,000 for the wages of public safety, and now we're receiving that money back, and it's going to go and credit the operating budget line. So what I'm asking for the Select Board to support to do is to take that 161,000 and continuing to, and continue to spend it as we have under the municipal relief fund for author, or for expenditures consistent with operating in the coronavirus environment. And so the parameters that I would propose you consider in order to continue spending that way would be that any single expenditure up to $5,000 can be processed through the town administrator. And so every expenditure would require preapproval by me, and if the expenditure is up to $5,000, it's something that I can approve, obviously within the 161. If any one expenditure would exceed $5,000, then it would require Select Board action. And so I believe this is a way that we can maintain the intent of the CARES Act Municipal Relief Fund in an administratively efficient way that allows department heads to continue making improvements with the money that's available, not burden the Select Board with making every single decision, but recognize that the bigger decisions that we're considering would require Board action. As a point of comparison, the town's purchasing policy sets the threshold of Select Board action at $10,000. I'm comfortable with it at $5,000, but that's my proposal, happy to answer any questions. comfortable with it at $5,000, but that's my proposal. Happy to answer any questions and looking for the board's support.
Board members, who has a question? Dan?
I'll, I'll make the motion, but.
Excuse me. Wait, I'm just taking questions right now. I'll get right back to you. Is there any questions? Seeing none, Dan, your motion, please.
I'll make the motions, long as that it's spent on reimbursable things. So we don't get hit with a bill later on.
And Dan, so that's the beauty of this. Because we're already receiving the money, there won't, there won't be a question of whether it's reimbursable. And so that's why, and like I said, I thought long and hard about it because I it's it definitely is going to create a little bit of an accounting situation because we're going to have an operating budget line that has a $161,000 deficit essentially or surplus, depending on how you look at it, right? But um so all that money is going to be cash on hand available to spend immediately and we don't have to wait and wonder if we have reimbursement. A couple of notes, and it's in my report, but I just want to make sure it's in the public record. There are there are still other funding sources, including FEMA, that will be available for certain expenditures, and we will still pursue that um as as much as possible. The other item is if at the end of the year, we find that we're able to continue providing our services without utilizing that full 161,000, it will remain in the operating budget as surplus. So we're not going to lose that money no matter what. So uh, thank you for the question, Dan, and allowing me to clarify.
Is there any other further question from the board, please?
No, but I would second the motion if you're ready for it, Chairperson Bailey.
I certainly am. I we've had a second to the motion. Is there?
Aye.
So I guess there's no further discussion. Bailey, aye.
Article five.
Coach, aye.
Thank you, everyone. The motion passes. Moving on, and now if we can have the COVID-19, please.
Yeah, so nothing further to update, but Mr. Bailey, I do have two items um to add under old business, which I had communicated to the board ahead of time. Uh, apologize, it didn't make it into my report. Uh, the two items are an update on Province Road and paving projects this year. And item number two is an update of the 2020 town-owned sale, property sale. Um, so if you would be willing to consider those, we can handle those in order.
Objection. There's no objection. Please continue.
So uh, real quick, and I know Mark's available to answer any questions, but for efficiency, I'll just um cover the um the update on Province Road. You saw in your email, the core samples were performed. The engineer found organics deep marine clay and a high level of salt from when this the road had been salted for a number of years. So he, the engineer's preliminary analysis is that the adding, simply adding stone is not something that's going to be a long term solution. And he'll be preparing proposals uh or suggestions um based on further analysis in the coming weeks. The headline of Province Road is this isn't something that we should rush into this year. Um, the the road agent and I believe that it's something we should wait on. So that brings us back to paving projects and I'll uh turn it over to Mark um for what our recommendation would be for eight uh majority of the balance of what's left in the paving contract.
So there's eighty some odd thousand dollars left in the advanced pavings uh actual contract with us. Um, if we chose to reclaim and put a binder course on the high on the highway portion of uh of the complex at Smoke Street, and it's not all of it, it's basically from the back of the old highway garage to the corner of the salt shed, um, over to the transfer station and out to the road is where all of the uh, all of the bad spots in in our parking lot are. Uh, using the existing straight line pricing that Advanced agreed to do that for, um, you're you're not going to find that price per ton or that price per square yard uh for for pave and reclaim uh probably ever again. So it's a it's a deal given the situation. Uh, yeah, there's a there's a fair amount of area involved at the highway garage, but it's not contiguous. It's all chopped up. There's a bunch of stuff in the way. There's the gas shack in the way. There's the spreader racks in the way. Uh, the ramp for loading salt is in the way. So you know, you can't, it's constant resetting, pull a strip, reset is it's far from being anything really straight line, what you could call straight line. So the prices of bargain, um, that would leave us uh thirty, probably thirty some odd thousand left over. Um, the price will be 56,000 for the highway garage. That would leave us with 25 to 30,000, I'm guessing in their contract. If we choose to do something else, um, the only other road that I would think we might want to do would be Sawyer Lane, but that's up around 36,000 to do. So we'd be we'd be out of the paving budget to do that.
Does anybody have any questions of Mark?
I do. Air?
Please.
Um, I I understand Province Road and I understand the bargain and stuff. Um, here's I a personal thought. Um, when we're grinding paint around the highway garage, is there any way to put a wear course on it over the new pavement this year around the loading dock? So the salt doesn't get in there and bond in next year? There's the one short deal on the sec around the loading dock of the ramp and around the salt shed. Because once the salt gets in there, it it may not bond that good next year.
Well, then you're in a situation with where you've got a, you've you've got an exposed edge of wear course that's going to be kind of hung out there to to get damaged.
I understand.
You know, I I I get what you get where you're coming from, but I I think it would probably end up getting tore up anyway, just because it would kind of be hung out there. And then comes time to put the official wear course on the rest of it. Now you're trying to match an old wear course with a new wear course. Um, I don't think it's it's necessary to do that. Uh, the the binder course that we'd be putting down is uh kind of a uh a dense winter binder, not very porous. Uh, I mean, you wouldn't want to let it set for five years before you top coated it, but it's designed to weather a win a a couple of three winters.
No problem. Thank you for the response.
Any other further questions, please? Do I have a motion that uh to allow this expenditure?
I do.
I have a motion from uh Mr. Air. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from uh, I guess, um, Ms. Hotikoff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, have a roll call vote?
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Article five.
Coach, aye.
Thank you very much, Mark, for coming by. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, folks.
And Mr. Bailey, just to be clear, that will be change order number three with the advanced contract. And is it fair to assume that the select board have authorized the road agent to execute that change order number three for the war work described?
So moved. My my motion.
Thank you.
Seconded. Yep.
Okay. Did anybody object? There's no objections. It carries Mr. Mr. Guyver. All right, we're all. Any other further old business?
Yep, there was just the one more. Um, I sent this out via email. I just wanted to get it into the public record. Um, this is the updated list for the the properties that the town will be selling. Um, the the new information on this is the amount owed. You'll notice in parentheses next to the property, you're not, you'll notice that for some of the properties, it's the amount owed and some of the other properties, it's the assessed value. Some of these properties we've owned for so long that the amount owed far exceeds the assessed value. And so when the amount owed exceeds the assessed value, we set the number at the assessed value. And so the uh lands committee met on Saturday. Dan will talk about that, but we're going to be sending out letters to a butters and uh offering for sale the properties in this first category. And if if and a butter is willing to pay that amount, we'll take it, go through the RSA 4114A process and move on. If not, then we'll bring them into the auction or sealed bid list, which has a few properties in it right now, and we'll move forward that way. So uh I know this is something that's generated a lot of public interest. This is the update available for the select board and the community and happy to answer any questions, but no action is necessary.
Questions from the board?
No questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Guyver.
Uh, hold on, Chair. I'll bring it up later on, but looking at them values, that money is not theirs. We had them so long and stuff. So if a butter is willing to pay a certain amount of money, whatever it is, some of these properties, we cannot look at the value. We're not in the business to make money. I know I want to recoup as much as we can, but some of these are not worth worth it.
Dan, I can.
To wait and see what happens.
I completely agree, Dan. And and I think by process, so the idea of contacting a butters is in the town's best interest because for all of these lots, we would require them to uh merge the property with their abutting property. But the town still has a responsibility to recoup what is owed to it, a financial obligation. So we're balancing that right now. And so what we're saying is if an abutter is willing to pay everything that's owed, then we'll sell it to you before offering it to anybody else because that's what's in the town's best interest. But if an abutter isn't willing to pay us all of what is owed, then we feel like we need to offer it up to the general public to see if we can recoup all of what's owed. The abutter is still able to to pursue the property. And in a lot of cases, the abutter may be the only property owner interested in paying anything, and they may get it for less than what's owed. But I think the the idea is we owe it to property owners, we owe it to the to the rest of the taxpayers to try to collect the as close to the amount owed as we can. And so if an if an abutter isn't willing to pay the amount listed, they can still show up at the auction or submit to the sealed bid uh for an amount that they think is fair to acquire the property, and we may transfer it for that. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. There's no questions. I'll move on to new business. And the new business, we have the uh 2021 calendar and the holiday list. So any further discussion necessary on these?
Nope.
Um, I have one question.
Yes, yes.
Is there reason that we're observing in December, the 23rd, 24th, as the Christmas Day observed instead of the 25th, that Friday, which is actually Christmas?
I think the 26th is Christmas, Saturday.
No, the 25th is Christmas.
25th.
So in in my mind, I was wondering why we weren't observing the Christmas Day on Friday, Christmas Day, and then Thursday, the 24th, was going to be um Christmas Eve floating holiday.
You guys are in 2020. I'm I'm way ahead of you. We're talking 2021.
Oh, okay. Hang on. Let me find that sheet. Why, why, why are we looking at 2021?
Because we set the holidays in advance. So we set the holidays for the whole year.
Okay, so haven't we already set 2020s?
We set 2020s last summer.
Right. So we're talking about setting 2021, and I'm asking you why in December we're looking at the 23rd and 24th instead of the 24th and 25th?
It should, it should read, the the 23rd should read Thursday.
Oh, did I put the wrong day of the week?
Yes, you did.
No, hang on, back up. But I gotta look at a calendar. Help me out here, folks. I I'm trying to say, oh, yeah, you did put the wrong day.
I put the wrong day. That's hey, that's why that big draft is there, you know, to catch you keen eyed select board members.
You should close the window. You'll be better off.
I know, no kidding. Um, so yes, uh, excuse me, uh, Mr. Bailey, I'd like to amend the document uh to say December 23rd, Thursday, Christmas floating holiday, and December 24th, Friday, Christmas Day observed.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have objections?
No, I'd make a motion to accept that.
That's corrected.
That's corrected. Thank you. I'm like, what am I not getting? Okay.
I'm just keeping you honest, you know?
Yeah.
And underneath the next one is transfer say uh seasonal hours.
Did we vote on these calendars?
Yeah, no.
Does anybody object to these calendars?
Let's do a roll call vote. I'll second Tracy's whatever fraction.
So I just voted on the holiday. You'd also like to vote on vote on both the budget calendar and the select board or um, yeah, select board meeting calendar?
Kind of hoping we could do away with that budget calendar, but I guess we can't.
Okay.
Yes, it's true. I'm sorry. We have two calendars before. So I have a motion.
So hang on. So as I understand it, we need three motions. The first motion was to accept the holidays observed in 2021 with the changes that were mentioned on the days of the week. So that's our first. Okay, so that's our first motion.
Seconded.
Okay.
All as one is fine. Just all counters as amended.
Yeah.
And then and and to include in this motion, the acceptance of the 2020 and 2021 budget calendar, and to include in this motion, the acceptance of the Barrington Select Board Meeting Calendar for 2021.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Air?
I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a vote. Bailey, aye.
Article five.
Coach, aye.
Now we have trans transfers, station, seasonal hours, expiration.
Yes. So uh, no, we're not, we're not asking for any action uh just involving the select board. So you remember that we came uh to the board and asked for a uh to start the Thursday hours for the transfer station early to help spread out the congestion at the facility. Um, that proved to be a productive tactic. It's still really busy on Saturdays. Um, but the 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 activity is dwindling on Thursdays right now. We just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that those hours are set to expire uh after the September 3rd, Thursday. And um if the board wanted to make any action to extend that or to have us look into extending that, we'd be glad to. We don't recommend it. Uh, and I'll uh turn it over to Erin if she has any additional comments um based on what she's seen on recent Thursdays.
Is there anybody else that the board members have a comment? Mr. Air?
When the, are we gonna get a um, the committee report, the transfer station?
Please, Mr. Air, please stay with this right now.
I'm waiting on that.
I'll come back.
I would like to see it was the next meeting.
Well.
Or directing what's going on.
The 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 liaison to the transfer station will give an update at the end of this meeting, and then we can work with Connor to decide if we're going to add that to our meeting minutes, I mean, to our meeting agenda next round. In reference to to this, I think that I feel comfortable taking Erin's recommendation that the um additional hours expire as they typically do.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I guess you're all right with that, Mr. Guyver.
Erin, is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, there isn't anything else. Um, I just appreciate the support. And we we noticed just a decline on Thursdays, and I guess it's just the normal normalcy of everything going back down to winter hours.
Yeah.
Erin, I want to thank you for hanging in there with us.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Seeing nothing else or uh anything else on a new business?
No, sir. Thank you.
Seeing none, I'll move on to uh select person's report. Select person's skill skill. Jim?
Oh, hey. Um, well, obviously, we're going to be there trying to get underway with construction. Um, planning board got bumped due to the storm. Um, so we'll hear word on that hopefully in a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much. Select person, air.
All right, start with the school department. I tried logging in for the special meeting, but you got to be pre-registered, so I didn't get in. I talked to God, they had 280 people log in, and they're going to get underway with school, and hopefully everything goes smooth. And um, and we get back on track somewhat. We were a lot of precautions. Um, I didn't attend the town lands meeting Saturday as VA phone teleconference and stuff, and I'm too much of a Yankee. So I let them do their thing, and then I checked in with the chair. They did a lot of work on this and then uh, got it all ready to go. They did a lot of work on this, and then got it all ready to go and stuff, so I thank them for their hard work and their time on it. And then the conservation, they're going to be coming forth to talk to us, a couple of things about the dam and stuff, and other ongoing things. And then there was a, that balance right now is $13,000 of change. They did some paperwork, and the new chair did a real good job on a spreadsheet and stuff, and so basically, they're running low on their budget, and we're waiting for that goodwill Richardson Tanish up to $190 to balance things out, but it could take a while. And then there was a nice couple that's moved to Town Water Retirement Home up on Small Roads. They did a lot of work, with the proper channels up, and they came up with a good plan to utilize their property, and they had support from the Ayers Lake Association, and they really encouraged this, because people do work on their property, go to the property and do it, do it correctly, and to protect the environment at Ayers, and they're very supportive. And that's about it.
Thank you very much. I will give you my report. I have meetings coming up, next part of the month, so I'll be able to report back. But today, we had a meeting, myself, with TA Connor, and we also had three members from the, two members from the trustees, and Melissa were there, and the discussion today was for a capital reserve fund. The library trustees are interested in starting a capital reserve fund, so during the conversation with, with all of us, TA Guyver turned around and let them know what the limits were, the best way to consider it, values were discussed and what have you, and they left them with quite a bit of information for them to digest, bring back to their meeting, and make a decision as to how much and what they were going to do, and how they were going to write the request, and what have you. So I just wanted to make everybody know that it was a productive meeting, and like I say, we'll find out what's available. And I will say, the highlight of the whole meeting, as far as I'm concerned, was that the Chair of the trustees turned around and made a statement saying that they were looking into making considerable changes to the library, and it looks like they have heeded the advice of not only this Board, but of the voters, so we'll see what they come up with for a new venture on that. So that, that's all I have, and I'll move on for-
Well, I have, yeah, I, I have just a quick report out. Erin, thank you so much for sending over meeting minutes so quickly. So, the transfer station committee met today. 450 community members participated in a very detailed poll that asked them about a range of different things and survey questions regarding hours, regarding services, regarding costs and things like that. So it's nice to see that 450 people participated voluntarily in that survey response. The meeting today lasted for about two hours, as details over both pricing and the breakdown of how we dispose of items here in Barrington and what they cost us. I have to say, there is a group for the transfer station that is excellent at digesting data, and Erin leads them in being able to really drill down deeply into ways that we can use the transfer station in the best interest of both the environment of our residents and, and in this particular case, and in the best interest of our budget. So, a lot of progress has been made there. I would also note that we have had 31 active COVID cases in the town of Barrington. That is creeping up there, I think, you know, we're still not at zero, so I would encourage the three W's, wear your mask, wash your hands, watch your distance, folks, and let's keep squashing this as best we can. And that's it.
I thank, I thank all the Select Board members, I really do.
And I thank you, Chairperson Bailey, for handling tonight, it was very appreciated. Thank you for jumping into that.
I want you to know that, not only do I speak myself, but I know I speak for the other Board members and Mr. Guyver, that we wish you a speedy recovery, and I, for one, would rather be sitting in the, in the bleachers than having to sit down in the box seats, so please get well quick.
Thank you.
Moving on to public comment, we have public comment. I saw a note from Melissa being back there, does Melissa have anything that she would like to come forward with?
I think she just joined the meeting. I think, I think that was just her coming in and joining the meeting, so I don't, unless she, yep.
It's good to know. So, with 30 seconds being ticked off, is there, if, if we don't have any other comments, we will go from there.
Looks like Select Person or Town Resident Dan Air has a comment.
Um, Dan Air, 334 Old Kong Turnpike. At this time, I might go into, as a taxpayer, as a selectman, go in and non-public in the future on information I have gathered, I will inform the town administrator and the Chair before I take any further actions. I appreciate your time on this. Thank you.
Mr. Air, I appreciate your consideration in this matter, thank you. Mr. Saccosha, is my 30 seconds up? I guess they must be.
Yes.
Seeing as how there's no public-
Oh, no, well, we have to start over, because Dan, Dan had said something, so we have to wait another 30 seconds, right?
No, no, yeah, that, that was a full 30 seconds. Seeing as we've had public comment, there's no more comments to go, do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I will motion that.
We have motion, I'll second it.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye. Anyway-
Protocall, aye, thank you.
Thank you very much. Everybody, I want to thank you very much for the trust you put in me tonight, and I hope I've lived up to it. Thank you very much, and see you all at the next meeting.